Good evening. I would like to call to order the October 10, 2022 work session of York County School Board. As we head into mid-October, we are now all settled into our routines and hopefully having time to enjoy some of the many fall activities going on. I know it's a lot of our students and families are enjoying homecoming activities and family engagement nights in each of our schools. Tonight, we have multiple presentations, and the first is our finance update. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Geralds. Good evening, Board members and staff. Yes, we have four presentation and one discussion topic under policy this evening. So Mr. Bill Bowen, our Chief Financial Officer, will provide a financial update. He will share information regarding the reappropriation of FY '22 end-of-year funds, transfer of funds from workers' comp to the Health and Dental Fund, and the CIP Fund for textbooks, employee bonus, and an employee raise. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Shandor. Just two topics this evening for the finance update. Let me begin first with the fund transfers. So at the end of FY '22, we had an operational fund balance of $5.6 million. At the business meeting in October, we'll present a resolution for the Board to approve the reappropriation of those funds, requesting that the county reappropriate those funds to the school. And our plan is to deposit $1.7 million of the $5.6 million to the CIP Fund. Now, part of that balance has been requested to appropriate to the CIP Fund. The county wants us to reduce our debt for bonds on the CIP by $1.2 million. And so that represents part of that $1.7. The remaining part of that represents some unobligated expenditures that we have due that we need to carry, that we need to pay for. And then the second one is $3.9 million to the tech reserve fund. In early 2024 and in 2025, we have our first significant refresh of our one-to-one technology, and this will help us, help position us in a place where we'll be able to pay for that refresh. The second thing I wanted to talk about is the Workers' Compensation Fund. Now, the Workers' Compensation Fund is reappropriated every year. This is a balance that we carry forward. We've had this balance of $2.8 million for the past few years. And consulting with the county, we believe that a $2 million fund balance is more appropriate. So we'd like to take $800,000 and transfer $415,000 to the CIP Fund for textbooks. Typically, what happens with end-of-year funds, they get rolled over into the CIP Fund. And so that's why it's being deposited into the CIP Fund, but they will be used for textbooks. And then we want to use $385,000 and deposit that to the Health and Dental Fund. We've had to shore up our Health and Dental Fund over the past couple of years, and certainly this is a small amount that we can deposit into that fund and keep us whole. The second topic this evening has to do with adjustments to compensation for the current fiscal year FY '23. As you know, the school, I'm sorry, the state appropriated $1.2 million to the school division for an employee bonus. In doing so, they also encouraged school divisions to use their SER3 funds to supplement that bonus in order to give employees a $1,000 bonus. If we were just to use the $1.2 million, it would be about $700, $750. If we were to supplement that with SER funds, we believe we can get that to $1,000. Right now, we're kind of stuck at an $800 to $900 range, but we are still looking at things that we can shift from one SER grant to another SER grant. But we believe we can get to that $1,000 bonus. But we'll make that announcement hopefully by the end of the month at the next meeting. What this bonus will include includes a bonus to all employees. Part-time staff and long-term subs will receive half the bonus, and substitutes that have worked at least five days as of November 1st will receive a $100 bonus. And so they will need, we'll need a couple of weeks to verify that information. And we have to have that pay, that information to the county by the 15th for the November 18th payday. Now, this will be paid on a separate check because on that November 18th payday is the scheduled payday for our biweekly staff. So they will receive two checks that day. And it'll just occur the Friday before Thanksgiving. The second adjustment I'd like to talk about this evening is an employee raise. So the county is going to provide us with $650,000, which will equal a 1% raise. We are going to have to supplement that, though, to get to that amount. It's about $400,000. This will be effective the first pay period for January. Now, what that means is for our biweekly staff, they get paid on January 13th and on January 27th. The January 13th payday includes days in December as well as January. So it's based on that first pay period of January. So that will occur on the 27th. So biweekly staff will receive the 1% raise effective January 27th. The monthly staff will receive it on January 20th, which is the scheduled monthly payday for those staff members. So what this means for FY '23 is that for teachers and parents, we will have given them a 7.5% raise. And then for all other staff, 6.5% raise. And that concludes my presentation this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, I have a question about the tech fund. As we've been putting some money into it, knowing that we're going to have to, you know, refresh it at some point, what is the estimated cost when we do have to do that refresh in '24, '25?
That's a great question. The Technology Governance Committee is actually reviewing some of the technology standards. We're looking at, and Dr. Carroll was leading this group, looking at the technology that we will need. Are we going to provide technology K through three or K through 12? Or are we going to look at doing it for three through 12? So certainly if we minimize, if we restrict it to three through 12, it'll certainly save us money. However, if we did it for everybody, it would probably cost us in the neighborhood of $9 to $10 million. And then the other question that we'll be looking at is whether or not do we stay with the current platform, Chrome for elementary and Windows for secondary, or do we look at a uniform platform across the division?
This is only for the one-to-one devices or all technology in the division?
This is primarily for the one-to-one, but there are some other items in there. There's a number of servers and switches. These are very high-dollar items that are included in that year. And of course, we have a number of other refreshes, like some security equipment that between now and 2024 and 2025. So while we're setting $3.9 million aside, we won't be able to save all of that money for the refresh. It's going to take, it's going to take significant monies between now and 2025 to fully fund the refresh.
And my question was about the bonus. The long, the subbonus of $100, that's historical, right? That's generally what we've done?
That's what we've done in the past, correct.
Okay. And of that, for like the $1,000 for the teachers or full-time employees, is that before or after withholdings and things like that?
That's before taxes.
Okay.
So their ultimate check will determine what their deductions are.
Okay. But still, that's good, with 7.5% raise that we're able to get for everybody, for the teachers and parents for this cycle. I think that's excellent. Yes?
I really appreciate Mr. Morgan's and the county's support for, you know, not only what they've done with the CIP recently and some of the funds they provided for some of our projects, but also coming back this year and, you know, providing the funds necessary so we can do this 1% raise. It's nice, if you're an employee in the district, you get a bonus right before the holiday, and then you can go spend it, and then hopefully, you know, that 1% will help you a little bit after the holiday.
And I know some of the numbers we had thrown out there early on in the budget process, even from Laura and the other board members, we would have liked and seen the seven, seven and a half right at the beginning. We just couldn't do that. But now we've been able to do that. So don't worry, she's staff working on that, being able to do that.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. All right, next we'll move into our capital projects report. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Geralds. Next, Mark Sheerhart, our Associate Director of Capital Plans, will share our capital projects report. Mr. Sheerhart.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Shandor, here's your capital projects report for the month of October. Quite a few projects to go through this time. The first of these is going to be Seaford Elementary School, renovation and additions there. They've been very busy around the building there installing brick. They've installed a roof over the stage. They've been building the CMU block walls, installing roof joists over the classroom addition. So they've been very, very busy. We do have a couple of some major things happening this summer. They'll start renovating the existing building and also widening Seaford Road. There's big things coming this summer. This is a picture we had last, last month of the stage area, the stage addition next to the gymnasium. You can see it didn't have a roof then, and this is what it looks like now. You can see the foam insulation that's been applied to the CMU block there and then the white PVC roof there above. There is brick at the very bottom of that yellow. There's a, there's a brick there. So they've started putting a brick on that addition there. So this is inside the gymnasium. It's built a construction tunnel to get through one of the doors there to get to the stage area. So this is the construction workers are on this side, and then the students are on the other side of the wall here. So they're totally separated, the construction workers from the students and everything, so they can keep playing basketball or whatever they want to do in the gymnasium and not be in conflict with each other. This is the back of the school there. This is the, you can see the school and up top of the picture, you can see the existing school. And at the very top of the picture, you see the parking lot out front. So in back of the school is this nine classroom addition. So this is last month, and this is this month. So they've topped out the CMU block walls, and you can see here they're putting the metal roof joists in. Here's another picture of it here from the inside, so you can see the roof joists they're putting on, getting ready to put the steel decking on that, and then they'll put the roof on top of that. So they're making good progress. As long as the weather holds out, they're making great progress. York High School Roof Repair and Coating, they're actually wrapping up the coating on this roof here. They've done all the repairs and they're wrapping up the coating. They're finishing up metalwork, downspouts, and things like that. This is a picture from last month. If you look in the background, there's, there's two trees, one large tree in the front. I'm looking at the front of the school here, large tree in the front, and there's a smaller tree in the back there. That's a second-story wing. You can see that roof hasn't been coated yet. And all the way on the left-hand side of the picture there is the cafeteria roof, and you see it's very dark there. It hasn't been coated yet. So then this is, this is the picture last Friday. So you can see here again from the front of the school, but you can see the second-story roof behind the tree there is now all white, and then the cafeteria roof up in the front here is white. So the only section that hasn't been done, you see a little very narrow black ribbon there, and that's just above the kitchen there. So they're very minimal amount of noise for the students, affecting the students during learning, during the day. They are in the process of painting all the rooftop air conditioning units to make them last longer, but they're doing very well. They're wrapping that project up. This is the, just another view of the roof there. You can see in the auditorium, in the foreground here, gymnasium on the right-hand side, and looking back towards the learning commons there. Next project is Queens Lake Middle School. Dr. Carroll reported last month that they had done a renovation there in that gymnasium, and we were just lacking the crash pads. So they've got those installed now. And this morning, they installed the light switches there. This is an image of the old crash pad. You see it says, just says QLMS on there. And then the new ones look like this. They have Panther with some scratch, you know, claw scratches on both sides there to make it, dress it up a little bit. And then the other side just says Queens Lake, and it before had, used to have some paw prints or something like that on it, but it's now says Queens Lake. While we were doing, finishing up the gym there, Greg Dolak was also busy at Queens Lake, and he installed a security vestibule there. This picture is taken from the front door. If you stand at the front door, you're looking in, this is what you see now. The main office door is there on the right-hand side. So this storefront's there. The, anybody that comes into the building or is admitted into the building has to go into the office, and once they check into the main office, and the office staff buzzes these doors here, and then they can walk into the rest of the building. So there's security. So all the schools now have the security vestibules. The next project that's very interesting is, Greg Dolak is running this one here, and it's a football field artificial turf. They've removed all the grass and topsoil and repaired some drainage. They had some drainage problems. And then they've been installing the stone subbase there. This is what it looked like back September 9th. So you can see the grass was a little bit worn out, so it's about done, so it was ready for a refresh. And then September 20th, you can see all the grass is gone and the topsoil is gone. So in this last picture, this is what it looked like on Friday. You can see here they're putting a stone base in there. And then they've got scheduled for the turf, the artificial turf, to arrive on Wednesday. And Greg told me that they anticipate about four weeks to install that turf. And then the last picture, the last project I have for you this evening is the cooling tire replacement at Tab High School, which took place over this weekend. They were very busy. The tower was 24 years old. It was galvanized steel. It was leaking, so it's definitely, definitely needed to be replaced. It was put in there in 1989 when they renovated the entire school. So they put in a new stainless steel tower, which won't rust, obviously, and it's a more efficient tower than the old tower. Here's a picture. They'd already removed the old tower here, and you can see the bottom half, the shiny there part there. That's the old bottom half of the coolant tire and the top half there. This is where they come, shipped, and then they assemble it on-site. And then this is a picture of what it looked like when they got done.
Cool.
And that's my last project for this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions or comments?
I have a question about like the different security vestibules we've now used, like the, the glass that's in those front, you know, atrium doors and stuff like that. Is that the bulletproof glass or is it the film that's put on it?
It's, it's just a standard film. It's not, we haven't used any ballistic film. This is, that film that was applied there was just to obscure anybody looking down the hallway. That's all that.
Okay.
I mean, somebody would have to get in the front door and then get in the second door, you know, get inside the security vestibule to be able to look down the hallway.
Okay.
Mr. Richardson, Mr. Schaefer? I know I always appreciate your pictures because when you're looking in from Seaford out the window, you don't even get a glimpse of what that looks like, but these pictures are just so great. I know it takes a lot for you guys to get those.
Well, let me put in there a plug. David Kilburn is the one taking these drawn pictures for me. So he's doing, he's doing a lot of work there. IT is letting him have the time to be able to do it for us.
That's great. It just gives you a really great picture and something we can refer back to. Now, do you know, this might be a question for somebody else. Are we continually communicating with Seaford families as far as the progress of things? I mean, is they all communicating on a regular basis just to let people know kind of where we are and what's happening? I know that you did something at the beginning of the year.
I'll have to double-check that. We've had some other topics we've been working on at Seaford Elementary School, as you're aware. We'll check, I'll check in with her, and I'll set a communication.
I just know that families, I mean, that community is so excited. So for them to have a regular briefing is great.
Absolutely.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Sheerhart.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, next is our 21, 22 working conditions. Dr. Shandor?
Yes, Dr. Tony Bledhu, our Chief Human Resource Officer, is now going to share an update relating to the 2021, 22 working conditions. Dr. Bledhu.
Madam Chair, Geralds, members of the Board, and Dr. Shandor, thank you for the opportunity to present the 2022 working condition survey results. So before I begin, I'd like to share some information with you about the background of these results. Back in 2017, the division began asking our staff member about key components of how they feel about coming to work, leadership, and other important topics that are important for the school division. In 2019, VDOE followed suit, so we're ahead of the curve in having a required working conditions results. We administered a survey every year. However, last year, the Virginia Department of Education is dividing the survey into high schools one year, and this occurred last year. And this year, our middle schools and our elementary schools will be administering the survey results. As we shared previously, we want to get information every single year. So the schools that are off-cycle, they're going to administer, they're going to be administered a Power 10 questions as part of our new strategic plan. So why is it important to ask our staff members how they feel about work? We believe that working conditions impact the work of educators. Simply put, how you feel about coming to work is important. We believe that positive working conditions directly impact students. When staff feel better about coming to work, that directly translates to our students. And we also believe that positive working conditions improve retention of recruitment. I shared with you some of these statistics in my previous staffing report, and this is an important component in attracting and retaining staff. On this slide is a list of categories that are measured by the working condition results. So each of these categories will include anywhere from three to seven questions. For each of these categories, we're given a regional average, a division average, and a state average. Let's begin with high school instructional staff. As a reminder, it includes parent educators and teachers. Later in the presentation, I'm going to share with you school support staff results. So on this slide, you will notice throughout the presentation that the dark blue indicates division aggregate scores. The green indicates the region. Region 2 is a reminder. It's approximately 14 school divisions from the Eastern Shore Acamac through the peninsula, to the south side, and as far as Franklin, as far west or southwest as Franklin. So at the bottom of the page, you'll see a Leichner scale. So you're looking at levels of agreement, anywhere from strongly disagree with a question or domain to strongly agree. And those indicators are going to be posted on each slide. So let's begin with teacher leadership and autonomy, teacher relationship, and the physical environment. As you can see, we vary by approximately 1/10 of a point from the regional and state average. Throughout this presentation, our goal is always to be at the state and regional average, but we aim to be higher. In order to be attractive, we want to be able to exceed those standards for that level of performance. In the area of student engagement and relationship among students, we significantly outperformed both the region and the state. On this slide, in the area of relationships between students and adults, rigorous instruction, and professional growth, the division is at or near the state/regional average. However, in the areas of managing student behavior and parental involvement, we outperformed the region and the state. As you'll remember, this is something we're consistent. Why I say is the parental involvement has been a strong performance indicator for us. So you'll notice on this slide that school leadership and school safety responses are on par with the state and regional average. I want to point out to the prevalence of bullying. A lower number is a better number. That means that there's less prevalence of bullying at the division level, so we are better than the state and the region by approximately 1/10 of a point. In the area of adult reaction to bullying, that is how we expect adults to react to alleged cases of bullying. In this case, a higher number is a better number. Therefore, we outperform the region and the state by approximately 1/10 of a point. Now, let's look at some important questions. First question, our staff or instructional staff were asked, overall, my school is a good place to work and learn. As you can see, we outperformed the division, we outperformed the state and the region on that important question. The second important question is, over the last year, working conditions for teachers at this school have improved. And again, we commend our principals for increasing performance on that indicator. And that took a lot of work for our folks to work to those issues, to listen to staff, and to address their concerns. So on this slide, you will see three circle graphs. And the green indicates the percentage of parent educators and teachers who plan to continue teaching at the current school. So the school division, we have 80% who responded that they plan to continue to teach at their current school. The region has 74, and the state has 76. So that is significant, that we have a significantly higher number of teachers and parent educators who want to continue to work at the current school. As this is an indicator that retention of staff is an area that can weaken effect by working on this number. And now, we'd like to discuss the working condition responses of our high school staff. So this is everybody else in the school that is not a teacher and not a parent educator. So in the area of staff collegiality, student engagement, and relationship between students and adults, we are a little bit lower than the region and the state. In the areas of physical environment and relationships among students, we are at the regional and the state average. In the area of managing student behavior and parental involvement, we are slightly lower than the region and the state. However, and professional growth opportunities and school leadership, again, we're slightly lower than the region and the state. To put this in context, and I'll explain later in my presentation, that we have two groups of employees with two different experiences. And we're going to get to some steps for moving forward and reconciling this data. So prevalence of bullying, we, the division has a 2.9, while the region and the state is a 2.8. So this is about a 10th of a point. What we're shooting for, where we want to get is a lower number, because a lower number is a better number. And we're a 10th of a point, we're away from the region and the state in this area. The next questions are the essential questions I shared previously. First question, overall, my school is a good place to work and learn. As you can see, school staff report that they have a greater level of satisfaction on that question or agreement on that question. Second question, over the last year, the working conditions for staff in this school have improved. So as you can see, we significantly outperformed both the region and the state in that area. The last question, over the last year, the climate for students in this school has improved. And again, our schools have done a much better job in that area than both the region and the state. Similarly to what I share relating to instructional staff, the circle graphs on this chart represent the number of, or the percentage of staff who responded that they want to continue at their current school. So 75, 79% indicated that they want to continue in their current school. At the region, it was 80%. And then at the state, it was 83%. One thing to keep in mind with this, their regional variation. We are very transient area with our military, so that may explain partially some of the differences in these numbers. As we compare the eastern part of the state with the region, with the western part of the state, some of these variations may be explained by population, geographies, parameters. So now to the action steps. This data has been provided to principals. In turn, our principals are expected to share this data with their staff and have honest conversation about what this means and what to do about the data. There's certainly areas of success and areas of need improvement. As I shared, high school administered a full survey last year. This year, they'll administer 10 questions to continue to see, are we getting better or are we getting worse from last year? And the elementary will have the full survey. I do want to, as a department, sit down with non-licensed staff or school support staff and ask about the difference. So you responded this way on these questions. Can you tell me, what was that like? What are some examples? Because I think, you know, when you have a number of staff member that spent a tremendous amount of student, of time in the classroom, and students have responded one way, and you have another group of employees who see students outside of the classroom, in the hallways, in the cafeteria, at arrival during dismissal, I think we need to understand those experiences and have some examples. After collecting that data, I'd like to share that information with principals so they could take some action steps that are appropriate. And we also want to partner up with anybody that wants to partner up with us at parent organizations. We need to value the work of teachers. We need to show we appreciate them, and we in turn expect those working conditions to improve. Teachers, again, their work extends outside of the school division. So reaching out to our PTAs, reaching out to other parent organizations, and asking them for help in this area. How do we continue to appreciate teachers and support them? I think it's an important component. You won't believe how much a simple note goes, "I appreciate you" from a parent. That goes for our staff members and our teachers, and we want to be able to do some work in that area. So this concludes the working condition update. At this time, I'm open for your questions and comments.
When was this administered?
So this was administered last, the window began in February and it ended in the beginning of March.
So it was after the kids came back, and so it, yeah, we hope it'd be good.
And generally, we try to administer the survey at the same time. We know there ebbs and flows in every school year. So if we have the same or a similar timeframe, I think the results are more likely to be comparable.
Do we know what percent of staff completed the surveys to see what kind of poll we're getting?
Yes. So we, at a high school level, we had 232 instructional personnel, which included teachers and parent. Now, there are smaller numbers of parent at the high school level than there are at the elementary level, and 78 school support staff. This gave us approximately a 70% response rate. So we need to do a little bit of work in this area. What I'd like for us to see is 95% response rate. And so I have shared this information with our principals that we need to provide it with opportunities to complete this survey, maybe during a faculty meeting, or maybe during time that we have them, because we know once they leave, they have a lot of demands that compete for their time.
The, the one question about physical environment, does that mean the school as a whole, or their classroom, or what?
Yes. There are several questions about the facilities and whether those facilities meet the demands of learners. And so one of the things that we can do, the variability in that is where really the change can happen. If a school has a score that's maybe different from the average, then they're going to that area. And then I could give them more specific data to drill down into the specific questions. data to drill down into the specific questions.
Do our principals do a school-based survey to their staff? Do some of them do it? Do all of them do it? To kind of get a school-based idea? Because I know there's a lot of things that principals can do on their own based on a survey they're giving their staff.
We had some principals in collaboration with Dr. Rice, the Director of School Leadership and Accountability, administer a survey. If there's a need where you have a sense that, you know, I really need to know how people feel about this, we'd rather than work on that and get that data so they could, you know, share with their staff, here's what you said, how can we work on it together rather than wait for the other year? We had two or three examples when we did that.
I just think we have so many new leaders this year, that kind of when they're coming in, doing that survey, and then giving them, you know, more towards the end of the year and just finding out, how do you think things are going with the new leadership? I think that would be really important, too. It doesn't have to be this survey, I'm just saying a different, a different survey.
Yes.
So, just to kind of gauge that.
I was looking at the retention of the high school teachers and parents, and I see that for the division, 1% is the ones that continue teaching in a state other than Virginia. Would that be what you were talking about as far as the transient military?
Yes, we know that on average, you know, a military deployment or PCS, or it's really approximately two to three years depending on the branch, and we hire a number of employees that are military-connected. Just like our students, we have the highest proportion of military-connected students. We're likely to have some of the highest percentage of staff that are military-connected. That's going to show in the data. So despite that, I think our division has been extremely competitive in attracting and retaining staff.
I was disappointed in the parental involvement question. I mean, I know it's probably declined since COVID, and I think we have a lot of parents who think posting on social media is involvement, but really it's, let's get in, get involved with boosters and PTA and, you know, helping to build floats and do all that. I mean, there's just so many opportunities for parents to be involved with clubs and sports and everything. I'd like to see that ramp back up the way it was before COVID, for sure.
And that's one of the areas that where our support staff reported lower levels than the region and the state, our instructional staff reported higher levels. So we really need to unpack that data and get our parents involved.
Anything else? Thank you, Dr. Bledu.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're moving into pupil teacher ratios.
Thank you, Ms. Geralds, and now Dr. Bledu with his second presentation. We'll give an update on class size at each level, elementary, middle, and secondary. All the data is presented since day 10, which is our 10-day count.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, members of the board, and Madam Chair Goral. At this time, I'll present the annual pupil teacher ratio report. Prior to starting this report, I do want to provide some information regarding this report. So you had Ms. Goff present the strategic plan at several school board presentations. We know we've done a lot of work with our principals, we've done a lot of work with all of our employees, and this is a new presentation format that we want to share with you tonight. So this presentation regarding class size is connected to two priorities. First, pupil teacher ratios are one factor related to providing a safe, welcoming and caring environment in which all students and staff have a sense of purpose and belonging. Second, these ratios are also one factor in attracting and retaining highly skilled, compassionate, diverse, and committed staff members. All right, on this slide, you will see that the standards of quality require school boards to report each year the pupil teacher ratios for elementary classrooms and high schools and middle schools. These are actual pupil teacher ratios computed as of October 1st. This includes calculation resource teacher, report on any classes funded by the class size reduction, and any waivers, which we do not have any, as well as to address pupil teacher confidentiality. We will not be reporting on any specific class, rather these are ratios for each school and the division. So this is a summary that is found in the standards of quality, and each school board shall assign licensed instructional personnel in a manner that produces school division-wide ratios of students based on average daily membership for a full-time teaching position, and it excludes special education teachers, principals, and assistant principals. So this is a chart that provides that summary. So in kindergarten, 24 to 1 with no class larger being than 29 students. In grades 1 to 3, 24 to 1 with no class being larger than 30. In grades 4 through 6, 25 to 1 with no class being larger than 35 students. And 6 to 12, 24 to 1, the division average in the English classes. As a reminder, there are no class size limits in grades 7 to 12 outside of English in the standards of quality. We do aim, in every single instance, to come below these numbers, and if we do not come below these numbers, then we will report ourselves to as required by the standards of quality. We completed this requirement last week. We identified classes, several classes at the middle school level, and we sent notice to parents. Those classes are primarily in PE and band. One of the areas that we informed parents last week was in elementary resource classes. Our class sizes in elementary are no different than last year. We're talking about the averages. However, at times, students are pulled for resource classes, and you may have a double class with a parent educator, that may be 35 in grades 4, you know, 4 and 5. And in those cases, we are transparent with our parents and reported those numbers. So on this chart, you see a summary of the pupil teacher ratios at our elementary schools. So this data ranges from 19.7 to 1, so that is 19 or 20 students to a staff member, and the highest number is 22 to 1, approximately. Now, these are averages, and certainly, when you divide many different classes, you end up with some decimals. The last column on the ratios, pupil teacher ratios with resource teachers, as you can see, they're much lower when you look at RPE, resource classes, library media, and we provide those ratios to you as well. On this slide is a summary of the pupil teacher ratio at the middle school level. As you can see, the range of class averages, of pupil-to-teacher ratio averages, range from 22.2 to 1 to 24.53 to 1. Similarly, when you include resource teachers, these ratios range from 21.57 to 1 to 24.09 to 1. So we do not have as many resource teachers at the middle school level because they take students, they collectives, but we do have a limited number of reading specialists at this level. Now to the middle school English class ratios. As you can see, the ratios on this slide range from 21.45 to 23.35, and these are English electives and English classes. So you may have some variation in the classes, but as you look at that department, which is a, there's a listing of these courses in the program studies, those are the averages that you're expected to see for the teacher-pupil ratios. At the high school level, as a reminder, there are no class size limits in grades 9 through 12. Actually, that begins in grade 7, but in English, we have a range from 19.44 to 1 to 22.83 to 1. And this is actually the English classes I was referring to earlier. That range ranges from 18.1 to 24. So York River Academy is a specialized program, and part of their charter is small class sizes. These are the classes that our parents receive letters at the secondary level. There were six classes in the correct and middle in PE where they exceeded 35 students. Again, that is only in sixth grade that we have those limitations. And at that middle, we had eight classes in PE 6 that exceeded the 35 limitation outlined in the standards of quality. We send those parents a letter, and the division plans to address those limitations. This concludes the report. At this time, I can take any questions or comments that you might have.
No comments, no questions. Look at that. Thank you, Dr. Bledu.
Thank you, Dr. Bledu.
Our next section is policy discussion, and we have policy discussion, IIAV, instructional materials with sexually explicit content. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Geralds. It's our final topic of the evening. Ms. Candy Skinner, our Chief Academic Officer, has identified information related to this policy. Ms. Skinner.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, I'm going to share with you a policy that we are proposing, and the policy is IIAV, and it's titled Instructional Materials with Sexually Explicit Content. This policy comes from Senate Bill 656, and you may have read or seen information about this recently, but that policy from the, excuse me, that bill from the Senate requires the Virginia Department of Education to establish clear procedures for schools to do four things. The first is to identify any instructional materials where sexually explicit content would be found. It's to help ensure that schools develop a process to ensure parent notification of any instructional materials with that content, permit parents to review instructional materials with sexually explicit content, and ensure alternative instructional materials are available for families to choose that do not include sexually explicit content, and that we are to provide those in a non-punitive way to students. So the Virginia Department of Education did develop a model policy for this. They shared that with school divisions on September 2nd. A couple of things about that model policy that they shared with the divisions is that it does require that school divisions adopt policies that are at a minimum consistent with their model policy by January 1st, and that tonight's the first night of that process for us. I'll share more about that in a little while. Two important things about compliance with this act that are part of the Virginia Department of Education model policy, that it's important to note that this is not construed to require or provide for the censoring of books, and it also does not designate instructional materials as sexually explicit based solely on the sexual orientation of the characters within that material. Last piece of the model policy is that we must develop a policy ourselves as a division that ensures that children are not exposed to any sexually explicit content without prior parent notification. So I'm going to just break from the PowerPoint here and pull up for you our proposed policy, and I'm going to walk through this for you so you can understand what's contained here in this policy. So the first part of this policy talks about the purpose, and these really are the exact four purposes I shared with you earlier, but for the sake of this, I'd like to just review them one more time. Our policy is to make sure that our teachers identify any instructional materials with sexually explicit content, that we ensure parent notification if any of that content is provided, we permit parents to review any materials that may contain sexually explicit content, and that we ensure that there is an alternative instructional material available for parents to choose, and that we offer that to students in a non-punitive manner. So those are really the four purposes of this proposed policy. I've also pointed out to you, within this policy, we have several definitions, and the definitions are really there, and they are taken from the model policy as well and in the Code of Virginia, but they are really a foundation for, a common foundation for interpreting this, the content within it. It's so that we're all basically on the same page when we're trying to filter this information. Those definitions are very helpful for that. I do want to point out definition G. Definition G does refer to, and it defines what an instructional material is. It states that it's any content where one or more students for an educational purpose, regardless of its format, and it can be printed, representational, audiovisual, electronic, or digital. It also talks about software applications that are accessible through the internet, and then it defines library materials and when they are considered instructional materials. And so it talks about that a library material is considered instructional material when it's used to complete an assignment or part of an academic or extracurricular program. And last but not least, this policy does, and as the model policy of VDOE, it does not include standardized national or state assessments such as the ACT, the SAT, NAP, AP, or SOL exams. The next part of this policy talks about the identification of instructional materials with sexually explicit content. It refers to that the principal is ultimately responsible for making sure that those materials are identified in the school, and we are in the process of creating an SREG for consistency across our schools in regards to that. And then also, prior to the start of the school year, schools have to identify any instructional materials that include sexually explicit content that may be used during the upcoming school year. A special and a very important point within this, and I'll read this for you. It says, "When determining whether instructional materials contain sexually explicit content, teacher, principals, and division staff should consider the student age and maturity, and whether a parent might reasonably consider the instructional content harmful to their child." I think that's a really important point in this policy because, as we know, how we interpret this particular topic could vary based on children's, the age and maturity of students. The next part of this policy talks about notice to parents, and we are requiring that 30 days prior to the use of an instructional material that may contain sexually explicit content, that written notice would be provided to the parent. And in that written notice, they would identify the material that's being used, let parents know that they have the right to review that information, and then also inform parents of their right to select an alternative instructional material, and that this right, this permission, excuse me, this notification has to be done in a form of writing. So it can be mail, or email, or in person through a parent-teacher meeting. And then the last part of this policy refers to parents' rights in regards to the instructional material. Principals will be required to create a list of instructional materials with sexually explicit content by grade and subject, and they will be available on the school website for parents. Principals will also offer online access to any materials that are identified as long as those are not copyrighted materials. If they're copyrighted materials, let's say like a book or a novel, they would be available at the school, and that would be indicated to the family. And especially noted here, it does say that the school will defer to the parents to make the decision as far as if they consider that a material appropriate for their child, and that if they choose to have an alternative assignment, that would be done in a non-punitive way for students. And last but not least, it does provide parents the right to change their mind. So if they've elected to have a different type of material, we would then, and they want to change back, we would honor that request. And that essentially really is the policy. The last part of this policy is just the legal references and then cross-references to all of the other policies. So that concludes, actually, no, it doesn't. I apologize. Let me go back here real quick to this. I want to share with you that this policy, as Dr. Shandor said, is tonight for discussion. We will bring this back for first reading at our regular board meeting on October 24th for first reading, and then second reading, it will come to the board on November 21st, and that's when it would be approved. That gives us, that helps us make the January 1st deadline that the state has asked, and it also gives us time to look at some of our other policies that we need to review to make sure they're in alignment. It gives us time to work with teachers and principals and to provide the, all the components that are within this, this policy. So that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
So Ms. Skinner, I know we, we've talked individually, the board members have talked individually with you and gone over this policy. You gave some examples of some books, The Diary of Anne Frank or The Scarlet Letter. Can you explain a little bit more about that?
Sure. So The Scarlet Letter is a book that, that some of our high school teachers choose to use as part, usually around 11th grade, and if you go into a book review like Common Sense Media, you would see that there are, there is some content that, it does contain some sexual content within the book. So what we'll be in the process of doing is looking through those, a book like that, and really deciding and looking at the definition, if that is what we would consider to be sexually explicit content. We want to make sure that parents are notified that we're using that book to teach our students, and then parents would have the right to review that book and then choose an alternative book for their child to read.
Okay, and based on age appropriateness, we're talking about high schools. And I know we've had a book in the past that was an AP course book, that there was some concern about some parts of the book. It was a small portion. It was a page out of the whole 360 pages or whatever, if you put it all together, the things. But I know parents also have the right to continue to challenge books as well, just like they do now, and that's going to be a continuation as well, correct?
Yes, yes, it is. Yeah, parents will, will have the right to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
So sort of going along with both of Mr. Richardson's statements, when it's something like the, like when it's AP classes, dual enrollment, the college board materials, like some of that is dictated by them that has to be taught. If there's something in there that a parent has a concern with or when the school division looks at it and thinks that it has sexually explicit material, what, what kind of options are parents going to have for that? Or is that even something that's been discussed at a state level yet? Because I think that that discussion is happening elsewhere too.
Correct. That's a great question. And so this was released on the 2nd of September and I spoke with our representative from college board about a week and a half ago and brought this issue to her attention. She is seeking further clarification from college board in regards to this because we certainly, you know, would want, if it's our, if it's our policy, parents have the right to review that. There is a mention though in the VDOE model policy about AP assessments. Oftentimes, a book is used as part of an assessment. So we need a little bit more further clarification on that and those are the things that I'm going to be doing between now and when we really put this in place, January 1st. I may not have an answer quite yet for you, but we are working on those answers.
And then going on with the, the other question Mr. Richardson asked about the, when people have questioned or challenged materials, have we had any of that this year? Like how many and who, who has raised concerns?
Correct. So we have not had since the beginning of this school year, we've not had a book challenged, but we had some last year. And a parent or a staff member can challenge, but well, really there isn't a limit in our current policy. But we as a staff, actually, one of my directors challenged a book last year, had concerns and took the book through the process of the book challenge and, and the book was retained. And we've also had a parent recently challenge a series and that book, those five books went through the process and we followed our SOP. It was a committee that reviewed it and all five of those books were removed from our libraries. And there is one book right now that is finishing up, going through the process and so I don't have a decision yet on that book.
Okay, thank you. Well, my, mine's not necessarily a question, but more of a series of comments about it because as we discussed, the principal's going to be the gatekeeper and I am very comfortable with the principals in our school district to be able to handle that. And I think I, in our conversation, I said, well, we don't have any activist principals, which I think is true. Also, as we discussed, transparency is a big thing and I, this policy that we developed, I'd say is, is about the biggest thing for transparency that it could be. We're giving out notice, we're putting it on websites, we are doing, I think, everything that we can and we are trying to involve the parents at every level. So I, I think it's a winner for addressing the state's requirements and I think we're going above and beyond.
Good, good. I'm glad that you feel that way.
And mine is really about the elephant in the room. You see on an agenda that we are going to have a policy about sexually explicit content. I know this is one of the first things I said to you as we were talking about this is why are we having sexually explicit content in our school division? And you said it's up for, you can give me your explanation again because I thought it was absolutely perfect. Everything is up for interpretation.
Yes.
Be a book that has a kiss in it and that could be deemed sexually explicit.
Right, we have to really look at that definition and the state, I go back to our policy and, and the state says, "When determining whether instructional materials contain sexually explicit content, teachers, principals, and division staff should consider student age and maturity and whether a parent might reasonably consider that content to be harmful to their child." So this does, it really is up for interpretation. We're going to develop a superintendent's regulation that really applies consistency across our school division to help our teachers in reviewing the content and making that decision. We really want to be as transparent as possible with our families and make sure that we're partnering with them when it comes to what their students are seeing and using for instruction.
Right, and I think it goes back to the partnership between home and school and making sure we're working with, working with families, making sure they have a say in everything that goes on with our kid.
Absolutely.
I know this has been a lot of work for you filtering everything that's come from the state.
Ever-changing.
Ever-changing. So first of all, thank you for all the work you've done with this because I know it has been a lot and you were so diligent with it. So any other questions or comments?
No, thank you so much. Very good.
I think the other thing, you touched on it, but it's, it's also weighing the educational outcome of, of the material too. Like people have in passive questioned some content in like the Diary of Anne Frank, but then for students who might be about the same age that Anne Frank was when she wrote that, it's, it can be a very important, you know, time for them to try to connect with what was going on in that, that moment in history, so.
And that, there is some, if you go in and look at the model policy from the state, it does talk about weighing the educational value of material with the content that may be considered sexually explicit. And that's a conversation, you know, as teachers and educators we need to have, but that also provides parents the option to look at it from that same lens and if they choose to, then we look at an, an alternative activity or content for them.
I mean, ultimately, the, the parents are getting the choice, you know, with, with it, whether, whether parent A and parent B agree, they're, they're getting the choice whether that material could be used or their child could use it.
Correct.
Right? Okay.
I also just want to recognize Ms. Barry, who's in the back of the room, who's helped with deciphering some of the information that we received from the Department of Education. We do receive several iterations of that. So Ms. Barry, thank you for your participation. I know you spent a lot of great quality time with Ms. Skinner, so thank you.
Yes, definitely. All right. Well, we appreciate all the presenters who shared information this evening. We know that a lot of time and effort goes into providing us and the community with detailed updates, so thank you very much. Our next regular meeting will be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, October 24th here at York Hall. Have a great evening. This session is adjourned.
Thank you.